Welcome to the April 8, 2019 meeting of the Florissant City Council. You all please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Hanks.
Here.
Pogano.
Here.
Next item is swearing in of newly elected officials.
The first one is municipal judge Elizabeth Dorsey. Mary Elizabeth Dorsey. You can take the microphone off if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Ms. Dorsey is also being sworn in by Judge John Newsome.
Newsome, grew up in the city of Florissant.
Alright.
That's why I'm here. You ready? Mary Elizabeth Dorsey, do you solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for your position as municipal judge as prescribed by the charter of the city of Florissant? That you will support the constitutional laws of the United States and of the state of Missouri and the charter and ordinances of the city of Florissant? And that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office?
I do.
Congratulations.
Next is newly elected mayor Timothy J. Lowry. He will be sworn in by outgoing mayor Thomas Schneider.
Before we do this, I have a special presentation. Legend has it that St. Patrick's drove the snakes out of Ireland wielding a large stick called a shalali or a cudgel. This tradition continues in Raleigh where I went to school. And legend also has it that Irish mayors since the 1963 charter have driven the snakes out of Florissant beginning with Jim Egan. Big Jim started the tradition by driving the then wooden campaign sign stakes into the ground wielding his own cudgel, which was a big green 10-pound sledgehammer which he used to get elected Florissant mayor 10 times in a row. After Jim Egan's passing, Irish chief Robert Lowry took advantage of the winning record of the much-used green sledge and was elected mayor three times. Bob Lowry passed the green sledge on to Thomas Patrick O. Schneider with more than half the handle missing and the remaining stub wrapped in duct tape. You know, I really am 3/8 Irish and I was elected mayor twice using the big green mallet. Not wanting to break the string, I took it upon myself to secure the election cudgel to make sure that we use the big green sledge to install Tim Lowry's big signs on the first Saturday in March. Tim's victory on April 2nd was the 16th win in a row for Irish candidates in this big green hammer. So now I hereby officially pass the sacred sledge and suggest that, Tim, that you guard it well so to continue to cast its undefeated Irish spell on Florissant mayor elections.
Mayor, was that the hammer I was gonna take and throw in the dumpster at the end?
Yeah, I saved it. I saved it. Okay, ready? Now we got it. Do you, Timothy J. Lowry, solemnly swear that you possess all of the qualifications for your position as mayor as prescribed by the charter of the city of Florissant? That you will support the constitution and laws of the United States and of the state of Missouri and the charter and ordinance of the city of Florissant? And that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office? Tim, sincerely, congratulations. You're fairly in and I'm fairly out.
I do have a whole list of notes here that I was going to talk about, but I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna wing this because I think I got this. First of all, I just wanna thank everybody for being here tonight, for my swearing in, actually, everybody for being with me this last year. As everybody knows, we started this campaign back two weeks after the municipal election last year. And so thank you for all the support. It's been overwhelming to myself, my entire family, my mom. And of course, as I've always said, is that, you know, Dad started the campaign with us and unfortunately, he passed in July. And you know, I'm very honored to serve in this role, very honored the fact that I followed in his footsteps as police chief and now the mayor, and I think that's history in the city of Florissant, that's never happened before. And that certainly means a lot to myself, my entire family. And I really do believe the residents of Florissant who really supported me, so thank you. Mayor Schneider, you know, I got big shoes to fill, there's no doubt about it. I really appreciate the 40 years of your service that you've done in the city of Florissant. First 32 years as council, eight years as the mayor, and of course, my boss the last eight years. And you gave me the position of police chief in 2013. Thank you for everything you did for the city, you deserve a lot. And I want to also congratulate and thank Mary Elizabeth Dorsey for what she did as far as stepping in and running as a writing candidate for judge. Mary Elizabeth, you ran an unbelievable campaign and congratulations. And I will be brief, but I gotta tell you that today, walking into that police station and then walking out of there at about, well, about 6:00, right about 6 o'clock was one of the most difficult things I've ever done. I've worked with these men and women in the back for the last 30 years, and I'm gonna tell you something, it was one of the hardest things I did. Was walking out of that building today knowing that I won't be the police chief anymore. But I promise you, the Florissant Police Department's in great hands with these men and women back here, guys, thank you. And I know that the firefighters were here earlier, I think they got a call, they had to leave. Although, they're all in the back. Guys, thank you so much for, first of all, working with them for 30 years and being there for me. Firemen of the city of Florissant are awesome. And then I just got a couple individuals I wanna just announce because, you know, I put together a really good staff for my campaign and these guys did an awesome job for me. My campaign manager, Pat Mulcahy, he's in this audience somewhere. Pat, where you at? Pat, thank you. Mark Goldstein is, I know he's around here also somewhere. Mr. Dick Kellert was there from the beginning, I think he talked me into this whole thing, my father. Mike Lanato is in the back. And of course, Kim Busselman, I mean, we had to have a fireman involved. And now that the campaign's over, guys, it's time to go to work. I know that I've got a lot to do. The one thing that I promised all along my campaign is that we're going to move forward. And I promise you, in this first four years, the city will be in a better place today than it is today because we're gonna work hard. I got a lot of great people, I got a lot of great city employees, and we're going to work together to make the city the best. This council back here, they've supported me the whole way, and I couldn't ask for better friends than the members of this council. And I know that as a group, we're gonna make Florissant even better than it is. We got some obstacles, some things that we have to overcome, but I promise you, it's going to be done because of myself and these nine people behind me. Thank you so much.
I will take a five-minute break, please.
[laughing]
Next item is certificate of appreciation to Karen Graham, but Karen couldn't make it tonight. And so we're gonna postpone this to our next council meeting, which is the 5th, oh, I'm sorry, May 13th. Next item on general approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting minutes of the April 8, 2018 meeting? Hearing none. Councilman Egan moves to approve the minutes seconded by Councilman Jones, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Next item is hearing from citizens. At this time, hearing from citizens to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda, for three minutes. This is not a question-and-answer period. If you need to, would like to speak to a councilman or the mayor after the meeting, please stay until and we'll get with you. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, make sure you wait till the public hearing and you can speak on it then. First one, Mark Schmidt.
Good evening, council, thanks. My name is Mark Schmidt, 1065 St. Anthony. I just wanted to take this time to really two things. One is welcome our new mayor to the council. Having served on the council for 21 years, I know what it's like to have a change of mayor. I had three of them, the time I was there, plus an intern. So it's a good time and it's also a hectic time because there's changes going on. So I look forward to that, and I know, Tim, you do too, that working with the council will be great. I also wanted to take this time to our outgoing mayor, I think he probably stepped out of the room for a little while, but having served with him all 21 years that I was on the council, it was a pleasure. I first served with him as the councilman, and he taught me a lot, and then served with him as a mayor. Not only was he a mayor and a councilman for me, but he also became a very good friend. Him and his wife Rachel, and my wife and I enjoyed many trips with him and many good times with him, actually. So I'd just like to wish him good luck in his endeavors, and I'm sure he'll do the rest of his life. I'm sure he won't be silent. But again, welcome and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Bill Schaar.
Good evening, my name is Bill Schaar, 1835 Clover Lane, Florissant. I have the pleasure of serving as the post commander for American Legion Post 444 here in Florissant, Missouri. This is my counterpart from the Missouri chapter of the Veteran Suicide Awareness Project, Joshua Evans. We wanted to come in and thank the city and the city council for your support on the job fair on Friday. Forty-nine companies, 28 veterans, and eight civilian personnel came in. It was a good event and the vendors were impressed. So I'm gonna turn this over to Josh, he had something he wanted to say.
Thank you.
I really just wanted to express my thanks, and VSAP is looking to get established here in the city. And this was a, just to see the show of support to the veteran community was amazing, and it's already a great step for us and we were very happy to see that. And as Bill said, several of the companies expressed interest in coming back again, and VSAP is looking to be doing this again next year. And we are just grateful for what you have done for us so far.
Thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walt Kaiser.
I worked with him last Friday. My name's Walter Kaiser, I live 105 North St. Charles Street, Florissant, Missouri, 63031. I am here this evening to address, make a recommendation to the council. I know it's part of your duty to appoint members to various boards and committees. However, how many of you have been to one of the meetings of one of the boards or committees that you have appointed a member on? I would venture to say zero. Haven't seen you at one of mine, but, okay? Okay. But that's what my recommendation is, that you, each member, where they have members of their ward on a committee, that they go and visit that committee and find out, are the members that they appointed doing what they were awarded, appointed, thank you, to do? And make sure that it, they are. Because I can tell you some boards that quite aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. But that's another time and another place. John, Mr. Hessel?
Yes, sir.
Have you been behaving yourself?
Best I can, Walt.
Okay. Just checking there. Anyone have any questions? I strongly urge that you institute this day after tomorrow, and I know you're all busy, but if you wanna think about it for a moment. This last week, I attended four different meetings on four different days, two different functions on two different days, and I'm retired! Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Walt. Mr. Egan.
Bond down the road.
Thank you. Antonio Maldonado.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President of the council, the rest of the council members. Today, my concern is I have an 86-year-old mother-in-law in a wheelchair with dementia, and if she needs to go to the senior center, she needs one of these. So I am asking that the council work on eliminating the expiration date for those seniors that are 70 and over. Because it's, last time I took my mother-in-law to get her car, I had to take her to the civic center, get her out the car in a wheelchair against her wheel, and provide information that she lived at 15 Alpha Drive, that's Ward 5, I'm sorry, I didn't identify myself that way. But it was very difficult. So I think that a Florissant resident that's been here a long time and is now 70 years old doesn't need to go through that process every year. So I would ask the council to think about, for anybody over 70, every year. So I would ask the council to think about, for anybody over 70, to eliminate the expiration date on their card. I'd be more than happy to go every year and renew my card and pay the fee. But somebody like my mother-in-law, again, she has dementia, she doesn't know it's gonna happen, and then she won't be able to get the service from the flirt bus or the senior dining room. That is my concern. I hope the council takes that up and makes a change in amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. Kristen Staples.
Good evening. I'm here to address you.
State your name, please, for the record.
My name is Kirsten Staples. My address is P.O. Box 345, Edwardsville, Illinois.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm here because I believe in forgiveness and second chances. And in 2015, I came to address this body regarding an adult abuse or a domestic abuse matter that I'd reported to the Florissant Police. Mayor-elect Lowry, I reported that to your department, and it was never followed up on. I was headbutted by my ex-husband when I was seven months pregnant, given a concussion, among other abusive acts, and no one from the department ever followed up with me. I don't know if you know what happened. I don't know if you had anything to do with the lack of follow-up, but as mayor, clearly the citizens have placed a lot of faith in you. I read in the Florissant Focus in February of 2019 edition on the chief's corner where you talked about how difficult it is for police officers to make decisions in high-stress situations, and how you believe in transparency. As mayor, clearly the public that was here tonight has placed a lot of faith in you, and I have faith in you that if you have the opportunity, and as well as the rest of the council, that if you have the opportunity in the future to hear from someone who wants to tell their truth about being abused, especially if it affects the citizens of Florissant and the administration of the Florissant government, that you listen to that person, that you explore it with transparency, that you view it with fresh eyes, and that you're willing to listen to that person and give them a chance to show them, to prove to them, to prove to you, excuse me, what they're saying. So that's my charge to you. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kristen. Next item is public hearing number 1904006.
In accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, and the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Unique Loving Hands Adult Daycare LLC, DBA Unique Loving Hands Daycare, Adult Daycare, to allow for the operation of an adult daycare for the property located at 620 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs to contact the city clerk at least five days before a set public hearing by calling 839-7630228395142.
Is a petition present, please? Yeah, state your name, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is William H. Watkins. I live at 2035 Valencia Drive in Florissant. I'm here to support my client. I'm the architect for the project. And I'm hoping, as I worked on the project, I read a Florissant paper, and they were trying to, well, the suggestion was to ban daycares, adult daycares, and children's daycares from strip centers in Florissant. And I know I have clients that pretty often ask me about that, those two use groups. So I'm here to support my client and also hopeful that I can get more detailed information about why the city of Florissant would want to ban these two use groups, so I can give better counsel to my clients. If the actual use group, and when we're designing, if we can work with your building commissioner and this, these two use groups can meet the building codes and the state requirements for that particular site, I'm just wondering why the city would want to ban these two use groups, especially when these two, when our building code and the state's requirements are all about the health, welfare, and safety of the general public. And as I said, I hope I can gain more knowledge this evening. So as an architect, I can better counsel my clients when they ask me concerning these two use groups. Thank you.
My name is Gerard Mudd. I'm with Bianco Properties. We manage Florissant Meadows Shopping Center. And I just, 1757 High School is my address. I'm just here to speak on behalf and really support Unique Loving Hands. I think they have a great model, and I would really hope that the council would look favorably upon the special use permit. I think it makes sense. Shopping centers need to be geared a little bit more towards service industries nowadays. It can't be strictly retail. I think we need to provide services for the community. I think this is a great service that would really go a long way for the city of Florissant.
Good evening. My name is LaShonda Mays Borgin. I'm here to request a special use permit for adult daycare and at the property of 620 North Highway 67.
Good evening, council. Congratulations, mayor. My name is Clarence Boykins. I'm her husband. I'm here to also support and answer questions. We would like to start off with some data that we received. Florissant's population is approximately 52,000 people. 16% of Florissant's population are seniors. That equates to right around 8,000 seniors in Florissant. And there are roughly 4,300 disabled residents in Florissant under the age of 65. There are over 2,000 of the Florissant seniors are veterans, and there are 2,600 seniors living alone in Florissant. Now, in the U.S., around 10,000 baby boomers are turning 65 today and every day for over the next 15 years. So with these, well, the data comes from the U.S. Census Bureau City-Town Estimates. Now, with these numbers here, what it's projecting that is gonna increase for the amount of seniors. Now, alone in Florissant, I was able to find five adult daycare centers. Now, three of those centers are also in shopping centers. So I just wanted to make sure I gave that information because that's real deep information as far as the need and the demand for these type of facilities.
Mr. Henke.
Yes. I did a little research on this myself. The ones that are addressed in Florissant are not necessarily in the city of Florissant, city limits. They have a Florissant address, okay? I've spoken with you about this. The council, we've taken a look at this. I'm speaking for myself now. This is in my ward. There's a couple of these that I've been by, and I didn't, I don't, I don't think this is a proper use, which I was very upfront about. I told you, I don't think this is a proper use. It's not the proper mixed use in a strip mall shopping center to have an adult daycare center. I don't care how nice it is. I'm sure it would be. I'm sure it would be. I have a couple of questions in my own mind. There is a need for this in our society right now, but we have numerous, numerous daycare or nursing homes, or whatever you want to call them now, that I'm surprised that this is not as being offered through them. It's a natural that they would be offering the adult daycare. It's not that I'm against the adult daycare centers, and it's not that I don't see that there is a need for one. I do not support this in a shopping center, in a strip mall shopping center. I'm sorry, but that's my opinion. I just wanted to share that with you like I did on the phone with you. I'm not changing my story.
May we respond to that concern?
Sure, sure.
You turn it on up top. There you go.
And the reason I wanted to respond because I heard that statement a number of times that a number of the council members don't believe that these buildings are built for these type of buildings. But now, these buildings are similar to-
Well, I never said that these buildings were not. I'm saying I don't think it's a proper mixed use in this environment, whether it be next to a haircutting place or a restaurant. This is, to me, is not what a strip shopping center should encompass, incorporate in it. I'm not saying you could build the best facility in the world in this strip shopping center. I'm saying that this is not the place for it. Either build it in another freestanding area, or, like I said, and I'm gonna be crystal clear here, I am not against adult daycare centers. And I'm not saying we don't have a need for them. My point is, I do not agree this is where they belong. I think adult daycare centers would be a perfect fit in some of our other senior centers that are permanent residents, that they could provide this service in and out on a daily basis. I'm just saying, and it's similar to what, and I know they're not the same thing, child daycare and adult daycare. I know they're not the same thing. I'm saying, and it's my opinion, I don't feel that this is the proper place for them.
Right. And, you wanna speak? And we do understand that. What I was saying is, we heard the statement in council meetings a number of times, that a number of councilmen don't believe the same way with your opinion, that these shopping centers are not built for this. Now, when we heard this, what we did was, we did some research to try to see what was actually in shopping centers, businesses similar to this one. And this is what we found in some of the busiest shopping centers, if you don't mind me showing. In Cross Keys, one of the busiest shopping centers in Florissant, we have an SSM Health Medical Group in one of the busiest shopping centers. Not only do we have that in Cross Keys, we have a dialysis center.
Sir, could you get your microphone, please, sir?
I'm sorry. We have another similar building which they do more medical-based with medical equipment in these facilities, but this is a dialysis center in one of the largest and most busiest shopping centers in Florissant.
And these are, these are facilities that are customers. They come and go throughout the day. They don't come and stay, and they're customer-based, they're not-
Mr. Henke, if you don't mind, would you let me finish, please?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Also, in another shopping center, we have an urgent care. This is another medical building. It's actually in a shopping center. We have another doctor's office in a shopping center. And in the same Florissant Meadows Shopping Center that we in, there's a medical building like two units over, and there's also an advanced therapy-
Therapy center, right.
Right. Also in Woodland, you have a JTL Home Healthcare, and you have a dentist office right next to it. Also in Woodland, there's another dialysis center. And I'm showing these buildings because they're all in shopping centers, and they have similar traffic and similar routine as far as operation. And this is Grandview, that's another dialysis center right in one of the busiest shopping centers. And also in Grandview, there's another health center. So what we want to, we want to really understand, when you all say we don't believe these buildings are built for this, we really want to understand, what do you mean? Because the buildings can be used whatever meets the code, so to speak. So if you don't mind, we would like to get a little bit more understanding of that, because right now-
I've explained myself, Mr. President, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hassel, do you have something, please?
I would, Mr. President. I wanted to respond to Mr. Watkins' comments and try to clarify some things. First off, it's important to note that perhaps Mr. Watkins didn't really mean it, but he said that adult daycare centers and child daycare centers are banned. Clearly, they are not banned within the B3 zoning district. What the city council determined a couple of years ago was that child daycare centers were not appropriate within a shopping center. Other locations within B3 would be appropriate, but not in shopping centers. This council has analyzed the issue, and staff is looking at the issue, as to whether or not a similar prohibition, again, it's not a ban of all adult daycare centers, and I want to emphasize that. It is a limitation on where the appropriate location would be for that particular use. And that is very typical under any kind of special use permit process. And just because an applicant meets the building code requirements does not mean that it meets the zoning code requirements. And under the zoning code, this city council is entitled to determine, under a special use permit process, whether or not a particular location is appropriate for a particular use, whatever that use might be. Restaurant, we deal with that regularly, things of that nature. And I think Mr. Henke has tried to explain that, at least for him and other members of the city council, that the use of a shopping center for an adult daycare center is not appropriate for the reasons that this council, again, can individually decide. And the examples that are being used here, such that you have a customer or a patient who has come and visiting to receive some services and then leaving, I suggest that's a different use than an adult daycare use. And again, I don't have a vote, as everybody knows, and I'm not opining, that adult daycare centers should never go into a shopping center. That's up to this city council to ultimately determine that. Again, staff will bring a recommendation to you. The issue before you this evening is whether or not an adult daycare center, as a special use, not as a permitted use, but as a special use, is appropriate for this particular location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hassel. Mr. Egan.
I'm merely opining that I agree with Mr. Henke on this. I was on the council when we banned child daycare in shopping centers. I thought it was a wise move, and I will continue to believe that way with adult daycare centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really just approaching things on a case-by-case basis, so I would really like to know some more information about your business and some of your plans that you have, if you do happen to be able to open your adult daycare business in this strip mall. Can you tell me a little bit about, you know, your background and what your plans are for this?
Well, I've been in the medical field for about 15 years. I currently have a in-home healthcare that we provide care to people at home, veterans, children with disabilities. And at our adult daycare center, we will provide those same needs to the people that, the participant that will be going to adult daycare. We would have activities throughout the day. We have daily exercises, daily group activities, getting these people back into the community and feeling like they somebody. You know, a lot of our elderly people are at home, and, you know, we are, as children of elderly people, we are taking care of them. And we not getting them out as much as possible. They not socializing. They not being able to be who they were before they became ill. So adult daycare, my center will be the center that will get them back up and going, give them a purpose in life, give them the opportunity to communicate with other people that's similar to them or have similar conditions that they may have, and just live a life to where you're not in, how can I put it, confined in homes, in your home. You able to interact with people, like we do every day going to work. We interact with people. It gives us the drive, it gives us the purpose to want to live for something. Our seniors are not being able to do that because they at home. And if I take her, I took her, my mom, for two years, and there's no way that I can do as much as we will be able to provide for them at our adult daycare. I wasn't able to take her out on Audis, do games with her. I had to go to work. I work mornings, my husband worked evenings, so we had to rotate, and my kids had, you know, activities. So it was like my mom wasn't getting that care that she needed. And adult daycares are for our parents, the ones that we love, our kids that's born with mental disability, that cannot do for themselves, and it leaves us to take care of them. These facilities are for these people that need the care, need the people to be able to interact, to live a long, jeopardy life. Like, we want our parents to be around as long as possible, but for them to sit at home and not do anything, that's just, it's just shortening their lifespan. And we deserve to, we should give them more to life than just to sit at home.
Yeah, I completely understand what you're saying. With our population getting older, as you stated, there's definitely a need for some of these facilities. Now, again, I approach it on a case-by-case basis, so I just want to make sure that I have enough information before I, you know, do a vote on this. Now, you said you were in the medical field for 15 years. Are you a nurse, or?
Well, not yet. I'll be or in within a year and a half, so.
Okay. How big is this particular facility? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
It's 39 square- It's thirty-nine square footage, so we'll have two activity rooms there, we'll have four bathrooms, we'll have, you know, a rec room for them. We would make sure they are there doing something every day. We, we will have a strict schedule, a calendar, where we'll do things with them. They are not going to be sitting around watching television, they're going to be active, they're going to be doing more cognitive thinking things, they're going to be doing group therapy, musical therapy, it's just different things that we're going to do in our facility that's going to keep our seniors on their toes.
Okay. You already have a curriculum put together for these type of activities?
I have some curriculum put together, yes, I do.
Okay. What, what are some examples?
Some of the things that we, for one, we would do exercise daily, that's a requirement that we would do daily. We also do group therapy, um, group activities daily. We'll do, um, musical therapy, we'll have someone come in at least twice a month. We'll do a pet therapy, you know, a lot of seniors like pets, so we'll have, I have a company that I'm going to go through that's going to bring pets around, and we'll have activities where we do outings, we may go to the zoo, we may go to, um, shopping, we may do a lot of different things as far as the outing, do picnics and stuff like that. Um, we will also, um, have board games and other things, and memory games for them, to keep them, they mind and physical fit active, keep them active mentally and physically.
Okay. There'd be a, a nurse on duty?
We nurse, a full-time nurse on duty at all times, because we would take not only seniors, but we would also take ones with physical and mental disabilities that needs a nurse. They may need tube feeding, may colostomy bags and stuff like that, and, and soon I will be the one to oversee everything, and I will be a nurse.
Okay. And what do you, um, are proposing your hours to be?
Our hours will be from eight to four, and then we'll have a hour pickup and an hour drop off.
All right. Um, as far as your requir, the necessary requirements for the state of Missouri, do you feel like you have any hurdles that you need to overcome to, to meet what's required by the state?
No, this is the biggest hurdle right here.
Okay.
At, other, and at the other part, I can, I could pretty much, um, get done.
Okay. Um, I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have a couple of questions. One of them is, uh, what, what were the reasons that you chose this location, uh, in the strip mall?
The reason why I cho, well, I looked around. I looked at, because I wanted a standout building myself. But as I was looking around, I actually have my offices, um, in Florissant, well, down in, yeah, in Florissant, but I looked around for a standalone building, I couldn't find it nowhere. And most of my clients and most of the people that I wanted to service with are in the Florissant area. And then I felt like it's a high need for it, so I, why not put a business there where it's a high demand for it, you know? So, um, that's, and I chose that shopping center because it had the, it had a nice square footage, and I wanted to do a lot with, you know, the adult daycare. I just didn't want it to be a, a, a space. I wanted to have different activities and, and things like that for the seniors. So that's why I chose that location.
All right, thank you. And, uh, you keep talking about the need, and, and I don't doubt there's a need, uh, but I'm wondering if there are any studies or examples, uh, showing positive outcomes of participants attending, attending adult daycares. Um, I know one of the reasons maybe that people might, uh, take their loved one to, to an adult daycare might be, uh, to, uh, avoid risk, you know, of them being home if they fall or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering if there are any studies, and maybe off the top of your head, I'm not sure if you can point to that, but, um, I'd be interested if you could.
Off the top of my head, my grandmother, for example. Me and my husband got married in August at, in Forest Park, where it was the hottest peak time of the summer. And my grandfather passed away, um, probably a year or two before we got married, and she was confined. She lost her, her other half, so she didn't want to really do anything, she didn't feel like doing anything. And that day, she came, she had a trench coat, like a fur coat on, and I'm looking, when she came in, I'm looking like, but it's due to the fact that she wasn't involved in a community. She wasn't getting out, she wasn't doing anything, so therefore she was confined to her home, and she didn't know the season changes, you know? And then after that, I talked to my father and my uncle, and we was able to get her in adult daycare in Bridgeton. So, I mean, that's one of the cases on why it's a high demand for our seniors, because sometimes when they lose their abilities to do things for themselves, they get depressed. Depression starts. And it's like, we don't want our mother, father to be depressed or feel the need that they are a burden to us either. So, because a lot of our parents will feel that way, and adult daycares give us the opportunity to still live our life and be able to let our parents live their life as well.
The, uh, I forgot the name, but that property manager, um, that's here.
Mr. Mudd.
Mudd? Gerard.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight. And, uh, and, and when this came up, and I was interested in sort of the, um, have you had other, have you had other, um, potential business owners come up, or people looking to start this kind of business in your prop, at your property?
Well, for this specific use, I think there's been interest for Florissant, um, Florissant Meadows, this is the first we've had here. But this location that we're discussing is set vacant for years. And, um, you know, it's, it's one of those where, uh, you know, I think, I think it makes sense, and I think it's a telltale sign of just, you know, retail in general. We need to expand, you know?
Are you involved, uh, or do you manage other properties where, where these?
Yes, I manage properties here in St. Louis, Indianapolis, and Chicago.
Okay. Do you have other, um, other cities or other properties where there are adult daycares?
Um, adult daycares, no, but we do have childcare, um, in several of our properties, but not adult daycare, but we do have childcare.
Okay. Uh, you know, this might be getting off, off the subject a little bit, but as far as capital goes, does this help you, uh, get some capital, um, to be able to, um, maybe do build outs for other businesses that might come? I mean, uh?
I mean, it absolutely does. I mean, it's, it's another tenant in the space, it's another, um, another business open in the city, and, uh, you know, I think it all really does, is it just helps liven up the center.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Begano.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. I, I just have a couple of questions. So I, I'm with Mr. Parsons on here, and I understand, I try to do it by case by case also, but I also agree with Mr. Henke about strip malls. So I just want to know something, how many staff do you have to patient?
It's going to be one staff to eight patient participant.
To eight?
Huh?
To eight patients, one to?
One staff member to eight participant.
Okay. And are they all going to be ORNs, or just, you have just?
No, we will have one ORN full-time on staff. The other ones will have, will be CNAs, that's, or qualified to deal with different, um, types of, of special, um, needs. And we will also have a special care team that will be there, that will be a floater, that will kind of monitor all of our patients. They will not be direct care, they'll be there to oversee everything, to make sure everybody's in where they're supposed to be, and if they have signs or alerts of any behavior problems, they are right there to be able to act right on it.
Okay. And, um, when you said you'd have kids with disabilities, what age group are you talking?
The age group, well, right now, I, we, we have the HCY, so we take care of the youth as well. So when they are not in school during summertime, they can come there to the facility as well, but it's eighteen and older.
So eighteen and older, there are no younger children than?
No, it's eighteen and older, and those are the ones with disabilities. Those are the ones that goes to the, you know, special schools and.
Right. And when, okay, when, when you're saying disabilities, I'm just, I mean, one day, one staff member to eight people, to me, with disabilities or mental issues or emotional problems or colostomy bags, that just seems.
Well, those ones.
So that's why I'm sort of concerned.
The ones with disability, those will be smaller groups. They won't, you won't have it all the, we would do our, um, staffing according to the spec, they need. So when I say one to eight, those are the ones that are functional, that are able to do what they, you know, do things on their own, don't need any, um, extra, um, help or anything like that. And the ones with the disabilities will be put in smaller groups. That's why we have two activity rooms. Those will be smaller groups, so those people will only have probably one to four. And then we will also have our special care team that will be trained to jump right in if need be. If something happens or they, they, the behavior change in one of our special needs, then they are there to jump right in. And we will have two of them floating around daily.
So you have, am I reading this right, there's going to be forty people, forty, you're holding to?
We can hold up to forty-three people.
Okay.
Um, thirty-three will be participant, the other ten will be staff members.
Okay. And then, where, now you say you have another building, you have another office, that the office is in Hazelwood, your other business is in Hazelwood?
It's in Hazelwood, mhm.
Okay. And is that just an office?
It's just a office space.
Or do you do this?
It's just a office space.
Because you just do your home daycare?
Yes.
Or your home?
Mhm.
Home care? I, I appreciate what you do. I have, it, it, it does worry me, um, being in this strip, and there's nothing against it, believe me, I take care of my mother, and she's ninety-two.
Okay.
So, so I understand that, but, um, I guess I'm done, thank you.
And I just want to, can I speak on that, about your concern of the strip mall? Um, we would, like, when we open during our hours of operation, most of the business around us will be closed. So we would not be transporting them during a peak high-traffic, um, hours throughout the day. And then also too, with the, um, with the concern with the strip malls, too, we providing service, just like the dialysis centers providing service, the medical, um, facilities are providing service, we are providing a service as well. So, and our people are not in and out throughout the day. Our people are normally, they come in, they are there unless we have an outing, or unless they leaving. So it's like, they not coming in and out throughout the day, like the dialysis centers and also the, uh, medical buildings. They not coming in throughout the day, and they provide service to seniors as well. Most of the dialysis centers, they, those people are in wheelchairs.
Right. So there, there's no, like, outside, when you're saying outside activity, you're, you're taking them off the premises?
We taking them off the premises. We doing outings, we doing picnics, we going to, um, shopping, we doing different activities with them, the zoo and stuff like that. And then we coming back to our facility. They not coming in and out throughout our business hours.
Okay. And, and where are you loading and unloading?
We going to unload and load. We would do all the, the unload, well, we would provide transportation to the ones they need. And we would do the unloading, loading from the rear of our building.
Okay. All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Begano. Mr. Parsons.
Yes, I'm sorry, I have a, a couple of follow-up questions. Um, in terms of meals, are you guys going to be preparing meals for your participants, or are you catering? How, how are you guys doing that?
No, we will have someone, um, cater the meals in, but we will have a kitchenette where we will be able to serve them, and I am certified, um, safe serve manager, so I would properly train everybody how to serve, uh, the participant.
Okay. Then additionally, what about, um, medications? Are, are you guys distributing medications to the patients, or how does that go during the day?
Well, the, the ones that can self-administerate their medication, once they come in, we will take them, and we will put it in a double lock cabinet. And the ones that need help administering medication, the nurse will administrate the medication for them.
Okay, okay. And then about transportation, I, I know you touched on this already. In terms of, um, getting people in and out of your facility, um, I'm not all that familiar about the location that you're proposing, but is there a, uh, fire lane right in front of yours, or is there a parking directly in front of your location?
It is a fire lane right in front of the location, but we would be doing all the tr, most of the transportation, so we would load and unload from our rear.
Oh, fair.
And then the ones that family members drop off, we will, um, we have handicap parking spots that's located right in front of our building. Yeah, go ahead. And then we talk to the property manager, and they'll have a little walkway for, uh, to, to, from the wheelchair ramp to the parking lot to the handicap accessible parking spots. So.
Is that true, Gerard?
No.
All right.
That's a crosshairs. This is by the license offices down in Parsons Meadows. That handicap spot, there's, that's a traffic lane, a both two-way traffic lane between that.
Hold on, Gerard, hold on, hold on, Robert.
Oh, well, you, I thought you asked.
I, I was just asking about, you know, whether or not he's going to be providing a walkway for them, okay? So there will be a walkway from that handicap space?
There, and it, and it's only, it's only around fifteen feet from the closest handicap space to the, the front door and also the ramp that's there. Uh, we understand it is a two-way lane, but it's a two-way, two-way lane in all shopping centers, uh, for handicapped people when they go shopping or any other endeavor that they do.
Okay. All right. But you, you said you're going to be loading from the rear, though, so what, what, you have any photos from the rear of the building?
That's what we, that's what we were going to show. We didn't know if you all were familiar or had been about to see the rear. So we took some, some pictures here to show you the rear, how much space we had in the rear of the building. We're going to, uh, build a ramp there at the back door, and also see about doing, talking to, uh, Gerard actually about doing a loading zone. Uh, it's a loading zone, a couple of doors down that, that people use, so we, we plan on putting a ramp there also with the rail, and that's going to be our load and unload zone, just to give you some more visuals of the back door and the space that we have there. We have nothing obstructing, uh, the back door at all. Just wanted to give you a few angles. And that's our door right there to the right, the, the door. And this picture is adjacent, the door, just to show how much space is out there, and it's minimal traffic. Uh, I also took a picture of the entry where we would use, uh, off St. Dennis, where it's enough space there for you to see, uh, a bus to come in and go out. And this is after you turn into the rear, going to our, our door, back in the back. So we just wanted to show that it was enough space back there for us to load and unload, and the only, uh, persons that would be driving back there for our building is our bus driver. Uh, anyone that may drop off, well, we, first off, we'll probably pick up and drop off most of our clients, but if anyone else were picking up and dropping off, then they would do it from the, from the front. So when no one else would really be driving in the rear.
You already have a bus for this purpose?
Yeah, well, we, we're already looking at a bus, uh, we're kind of waiting on this process to do some things, because without this, we just have, have everything else kind of on hold. But we have the bus lined up, uh, we have our paperwork for the state, we pretty much have everything else lined up.
All right, thank you. And thanks for the pictures, those are helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Yes, um, what is your requirements, your experience with geriatric care for your, um, employees?
I've been, um, like I said, I've been working with, um, geriatric patients for about fifteen years, and I'm, will soon in a year and a half be a nurse, so, um, I have a lot of experience with, um, different, um, geriatric patients, the Alzheimer's. Um, I worked in an Alzheimer unit, um, I administered medication, so I have a lot of experience with it, so.
Now, your staff, what is, um, what about your staff?
My staff, well, I have a ORN full-time on staff, um, and then out, the rest of them will be certified CNAs, and they will be qualified to handle the ones with Alzheimer's and dementia and ones with special needs.
And I'm, I'm in agreeance with what everybody else basically up here, the consensus of the traffic out there, and you're, that shopping center, especially where you're proposing to put your business, that's very busy right there.
Mhm.
And you said, when they, you bring your clients to your shop, or to the, um, center, that would be prior to most of them shops opening, correct? Is it, do you stay?
Well, they, yes, they will, won't be open when we bring them, but as we, uh.
But at four o'clock, when you're closing, correct? That is one of the most busiest intersections right around that corner, right there.
We're not on the corner, we, like, two spots.
You're, you're on the L shape. You have, you have the men's store right here, then you, and then?
Yes, that's why we will unload and load from the back.
The way you drive in there, I know, I've been in that, that, I've been in that shopping center many a times. That's very busy right there, very busy with traffic. And like Mr. Henke was saying, with the handicap, now is there a handicap ramp, a now is there a handicap ramp ADA?
Yes.
Accessible ramp, ADA required ramp right there in, in front of your building?
Six feet from it.
Six feet?
Just outside.
Okay.
Yes. Now, now, now the thing, Mr. McCup-, uh, Mr. Kaputa, that we wanna be understood too, even in the evening, like you said, the busiest, busiest part of the day, uh, we don't wanna focus on the traffic in the front because no one will be in the front. We're gonna be unloading from the back. And in the back, there's minimal traffic at all parts of the day.
That's pretty busy back there too because that's a cut-through. But that's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna clarify that, um, that I, I think that you've done a good job to present this and, and, and I, and I don't have concerns about it. Um, so I'm in support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
I, can I, Kaputa, can I elaborate on what you said too? And that is a busy shopping center. And like we said, our, um, where our door is located, that's no traffic right there. We will have access to pull right up ramp and be able to load and unload. And another thing too, with the Cross Keys Center, you have a Dallas's center in there, right? That provides service to seniors. They, I rode past there, my husband rode past. And I just wanna show you some of the things that we are seeing in the busiest cross, busiest shopping center in Florissant. Right here is, um, a taxi cab picking up from the Dallas's Center right in front of our lane.
Right in front of?
We also have an E M T that's loading someone in a wheelchair. That's the Dallas's Center. That's, he's across the stop sign at the busiest shopping center in Cross Keys, loading it. And then we also wanna show that we have City of Florissant too. Uh, right there in the, in front of the Dallas's Center at the busiest shopping center, Cross Keys. And they picking up someone from the Dallas's Center as well. So when we say, um, you just don't believe that, um, adult daycares are suitable for the shopping center, time has evolved. Shopping centers is not retail anymore. People are doing more online shopping and they are becoming services. Shopping centers are now, we can say, are providing services. Because Dallas's Center is not retail, it's a service that's been provided to seniors with, uh, health conditions. So I just wanna, you know, I don't want you guys to, um, I just wanna get a clear understanding on why adult daycares is not suitable for, um, shopping centers. And I just, like data, like, do you have, was it an incident that happened that pushed you guys to that? Or what was it? Because you just approved, like, within the last two years, I looked up, uh, Dallas's centers just got approved, like, six of them within the last two years. They providing service to seniors. Uh, well, at least five. Well, and what, what we're just trying to say is they providing the same service we are providing to seniors. And they was approved for a special use, uh, permit. They providing the same service. And guess what? They are unloading and unloading throughout the day, constantly unloading and unloading. And they parking spots are way more than twenty feet from the building. So I'm just curious on how they are loading and unloading these seniors in a wheelchair. I, I mean, I'm just-
Mr. Hinky? Uh, I think I'd just be repeating myself because the, the basic premise, we're not against the whole concept of it. We're, we're siding off on side roads here. We're not against the whole premise of it. So that's all I have.
Well, 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 Mr. Hinky, uh, Mr. Hinky, we just wanna ask you a question because the thing is, we understand your opinion and, and what you said, but we really, no one really told us why. You haven't gave us any information or data to suggest why you have that opinion. Have you, have, do, do you know of a safety incident?
I'm elected by the people in my ward to, 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 to watch what goes on in my ward, as each one of us has. People have come to me and said, this is not an accepted use. I represent those people. That's my explanation. I don't have to have any further explanation than I'm representing people in my ward. I am not against this type of service. You're painting this as an us and them that we're against this. Well, we are not. I am against this in this atmosphere. That's all I have.
Okay, can I address that? I just wanna address that too because you, you, you're fighting for the people in your ward. Some of your people in your ward, maybe tomorrow, may have a stroke. Could be you, and you might need that facility. You know, so therefore you, if it was enough standoff buildings for us to provide this service, we wouldn't be here now. We'll be in a stand-alone building. But it's not. And these retail centers, just like the Mills Mall, they built that center and it was retail. It's a big church in there now. It's re-evolving.
Man, that's, that's another city-
I know, I'm just saying in general.
Go on, Mr. Jones, you have something, please?
Yes, we're starting to get off into weeds. But, uh, from Ward Two's point, I've had many residents call me on these in the past. And I will stick to voting no, I'm against these. I'm not against adult daycares. I am for them being not in shopping centers. That's not what these shopping centers were built for, else they would've been in there thirty years ago. They are just now starting to come up there because they're empty space and cheap rent. I am totally against this. I have residents out there at this meeting tonight that are gonna stand up and browbeat me to make sure I vote the right way. I have had over ten to fifteen calls on these adult daycare centers. They do not want them in my ward or this city. So that's where I will be sitting, is no.
So, Mr. Jones, so they approved the, the Dallas's Centers?
Yes, something different.
What, what's, they providing service to seniors?
Can, can we?
We-
Right, okay, now-
This is a medical emergency too, where you can't take care of your senior and-
Well, I wanna hear from the, I wanna hear from the residents, Jeff, but I, I'm ready.
Well, we, we, we still just trying to understand because as, as, as far as we see, right here- Well, we, we, we really don't want it to be an argument, but we do want some type of explanation.
A personal opinion is not gonna get it.
We need an explanation on what-
You, 'cause you gotta have facts and data. You gotta have data. Personal opinion doesn't get it. Like, this is all personal opinions on how you believe, how you feel, and the City of Florissant should go off of your personal opinion? What if it's somebody mother in Florissant that needs this service?
Ms. Pagano?
Ma'am.
Mhm.
I think, you know, we have all spoke, you have argued, you came in very defensive that we weren't, we haven't even voted yet.
Okay.
Okay, we haven't voted. This is just a public hearing. So we will listen, we will listen to our residents. But the more you stand up there and argue at us, is not really helping your case. I'm just saying, I understand, I understand dialysis and I understand the elderly. Two different things. So, right now I would move to close this public hearing, ask the audience, you know, with the, if there's anyone who would like to speak on it, and let's be done, and then we'll move on. And in two weeks, when we go to the other readings on this. Because I believe you have a first reading tonight. So we wouldn't be voting on this tonight anyway.
And, um-
Thank you.
Mr. Pagani, I'm not trying to make an argument. I'm just trying to state facts. It's just stating facts, you know?
Yes, I'm done. Uh, there's a motion. Is there anyone in the pub, in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing?
We have a room?
Please, um, come up to the podium.
Good evening, folks. Two things, my name is Don Adams, I live in Florissant. I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to make the statement, because of our councilman and you being elected and us getting to, my family getting to know some of you councilpeople, we've decided to stay in Florissant and fight, to fight for Florissant. Shopping centers were meant for shopping. They weren't meant for daycare centers. Grandview Plaza, I mean, I'm over Grandview Plaza a lot because I'm retired. And let's face it, Grandview Plaza is not a rock and roll center when it comes to shopping centers. Very low business over there. There's a difference between dialysis, there's a difference between doctor's offices, there's a difference between daycare. Go over to Hobby Lobby, um, on, on the Rock Road, daycare center right next to it. What do they got? They got all the old people lined up in their chairs, sitting out on the sidewalk drooling on themselves. Okay? I'm saying that shopping centers are not meant for daycare. There's too much traffic. I don't care what they say, there is too much traffic where you have to worry about somebody getting hit. And that's, that is just a simple fact. You could put up fifty stop signs, fifty red lights and have ten policemen sitting there, and you're still gonna have an issue with traffic. Okay? And the roadway between the curb and where that handicap parking spot was, was at least twenty-two to twenty-five feet, if not more. Because that's what the roadway has to be. It wasn't no twelve feet from that handicap spot to that curb. Okay? I can tell you that for a fact. Okay? The thing is, if these shopping centers wanna put stuff in them, then hey, I got a real good idea. Why don't they lower the cost of their rent? And maybe we can get more businesses to come into Florissant and shop here and have businesses here and not have to worry about daycare. You wanna put daycare center in, in an off-the-beat place where there's no traffic? That is fine. But like, uh, one of your councilpeople said, there is traffic because it is a cut-through behind that shopping center. Because I use it many a time. And there is traffic back there. And I'm just saying that daycare centers do not belong in shopping centers. I s, we, I spoke my opinion on this last month or the month before last, when we had one someplace else. And I will go to my grave saying, shop, shopping centers and daycare centers, whether they're adults or kids, they do not belong in shopping centers. And I thank you and I wish you'd all take that in consideration.
Thank you.
Hi there. So I am a native Florissant resident, however, I came to-
State your name, ma'am, for the record.
Yes, Rebecca Helms, spelled H E L M S. So, um, what I do, where I am coming from though, is, um, I am a special education teacher at Northview High School, which is located off Durhakee. It's a phase three facility for students with severe behavior disorders as well as physical and mental ailments. So for me, working with students with multiple disabilities, we see them through age twenty-one. Um, when they leave us and they graduate at age twenty-one, the parents are, like, in complete fear as to where their non-verbal child, young adult, is gonna go. Um, I realize that there's a handful of adult day programs in North County, in the Florissant area right now. However, there is not one in this area that ha, offers the resources that they are gonna offer in their facility with a changing table, um, for someone with severe needs. Which leaves families, either there's one, they, they can either go to U C P, which is a twenty-five-minute drive for them to get to them, or they stay at home and have a nurse come in the home. So for them, their child goes from being with us all day, socializing, going out in the community, things of that nature, to nothing. Um, and, and, and that's, that's a scary and sad thing for the individual, him or herself, as well as the families. Um, the other thing that I do like that they're gonna offer at their facility, other than the resources for the severely handicapped, is the fact that they are gonna have both ends of the spectrum. So they're gonna have elderly individuals as well as young adults with disabilities, um, combined. And so I can tell you just off of talking with my families, they all love that. Because their students, their, their children are non-verbal. So to facilitate a whole bunch of non-verbal individuals in one facility, well, what do you, they're not gonna talk to each other. So what you have, when you have elderly mixed in, is you have, like, grandmas and grandpas that take care of them and they talk to them all day. And the parents love that. They love that idea. And I can tell you, just speaking with some of my parents, they wouldn't mind one bit if their child were to be dropped off at a facility where there was shopping and live action and things. They want that for their child. They want that socialization piece. So I can't really speak on behalf of the elders, elderly individuals, but I can totally stand here tonight and speak on behalf of individuals with severe disabilities that are non-verbal. And I've been doing this for fourteen years. And I've been dealing with their parents. And I have a wealth of knowledge with all of the day programs that we have to offer out in this area. And there is not gonna be one with, with the, the resources that they're offering at their facility. So, just thought I'd give my two cents on that. Thank you for your time.
Patty Sosa, uh, resident of this ward of Old Town, small business owner. Um, I'm confused because, um, I had my mom living with me for many years and we were going somewhere and it was a shopping center in Florissant. And it was an adult daycare business. And we went in and she stayed there for a little while. And, you know, I did running and we were just checking it out. Um, I'm familiar with these places and they're wonderful for people, um, and families. And, um, I think shopping malls are kind of a dinosaur. They are changing. And we have to look for change. You have a lot of empty businesses, um, or office space or whatever, retail space. And I think it's a, um, bonus for the community to have something like that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. And I trust that everyone had a wonderful Easter. My name is Plachet Richmond and I reside at Five Walla Run, St. Charles, Missouri. I, for one, and firsthand, know how vital and beneficial the adult daycare would be. I have a twenty-six-year-old son whom, September of two thousand seventeen, I received a call from a social worker from Dallas Presbyterian Hospital. My son was currently residing there and had been living there for about four years. So she called me to say that my son was critically ill. My son as a child had lived a pretty healthy and normal life. But September of two seventeen had suddenly took a turn, um, uh, for the worse, actually. He had came down with, uh, spinal meningitis, which has now left him paralyzed from the waist down. Uh, an aneurysm, suffered an aneurysm. Uh, chickenpox, shingles virus. So all of these diseases happened like back-to-back with him. So I traveled from St. Louis to Dallas for two months. And I left my, at the time, twelve-year-old daughter, which she's thirteen, at home with him now. So I traveled for two months back and forth from St. Louis to Dallas, um, Texas. And, um, during that time, his father had taken a turn for the worse. He had, had been battling cancer for two years. So by the time we finally got back here to St. Louis, November the seventeenth of two thousand seventeen, his father was unresponsive and on hospice. So we did get a chance to see him twice before he passed away, two days after Thanksgiving. My son's grandmother, his father, his mother passed away two days before Christmas. And so my son went from Mercy Hospital to St. Luke's Hospital in Chesterfield because those diseases had caused an infection in both his eyes. So he had retina detachment surgery in both eyes. So my son, who's twenty-six years old, life has suddenly changed from a normal young adult to now just being lame and home in a bed. Um, February two thousand eighteen, my mother was rushed to DePaul Hospital. She went from intensive care to code blue twice. They reassessed her, she wound up on life support. And by the grace of God, she came off. So my mother is home at her place with C O P D, with, uh, diabetes, with, um, she was on oxygen twenty-four-seven, high blood pressure. And I can't think of the other thing right, 'cause just a failure, I'm sorry. So right now, I'm juggling, 'cause my son now lives with me, of course, and my thirteen-year-old daughter. So now I juggle the time between my son and my mother. So an adult daycare would be perfect to allow me some time to, um, having to go from house to house with me, living in St. Charles. My mother lives, uh, not too far from here. And then still trying to be a parent and mother to my daughter. The owner of the company, I'm already with now because I provide care months later, ten, eleven months later. So it wasn't right away before I started, uh, receiving any money, not that I needed to take care of my mother and my son. But, um, the owner, um, is, is a loving person. And I can just, um, only imagine what she plans to do with the adult daycare because she makes personal house visits to my house to come and sit personally in my son's room and talk to him and just to see how things are going with him and also with my mother. And I keep hearing this big argument about a daycare, adult daycare. And to me, it's different from like a little small daycare where kids may run out to the cars or, 'cause they happen to see their parents coming to pick them up at the end of the day. We're talking about an adult daycare with, uh, folks with disabilities, We're talking about an adult daycare with folks with disabilities, such as my son, who's twenty-six-years-old, who's in a wheelchair, or elderly people. So I can't see them running out in the street to, you know, that can possibly be harmed. And then with the company having, whatever they have worked out for us to rear. But I just want to say that I really think that, not only myself, but a lot of folks here in Florissant and other areas would really benefit with the company, with the adult daycare. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Smith, two-eight-two-three Chapel View. I'm just going to give an opinion. We have, my mother-in-law was in an adult daycare in a strip mall. And she did just fine. A kind of neutral on the strip mall, I can understand, you know, with the traffic. And it not be in certain areas. But I guess we need to, as a city, make a determination and come to a point because you're going to keep getting individuals coming up here to apply, to start a business. And if you are going to make a determination and say no, then you got to give them a reason why. You just can't say, no, I don't want to, we're not going to have that. Or, you know, case by case, yeah, we have a couple of them now in the city of Florissant. And I've not heard bad things about them. But, I mean, we do have to come to a conclusion with these. Because I've sat in on a few city council meetings and the last few have just been flat-out no. And if those people had been told earlier, they wouldn't have wasted a lot of money and time. So I think Florissant has to, no longer teeter. It's going to be either you're going to have them or you're not going to have them. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Walter Kaiser, one-oh-five North St. Charles Street, Florissant, Missouri. I've lived in this area extremely long time and I'm probably older than anybody here, including the audience. Six-twenty, North Highway sixty-seven, at one time, was a business called The Toy Fair. And if I understood the young lady right, and there's no guarantee of that, she said something like thirty-three individuals in that space. Having spent time in and out of that toy fair delivering mail on a daily basis, I don't believe that that building is big enough to support the bathroom facilities, toilet facilities, the warmers for the food, the tables, the chairs, and everything else that would be required. And then there is one other consideration. The gentleman said that they would evacuate, take the people out of the back of the store, of the address. Anybody who's lived here long enough knows and can remember that that flooded. There's no way in purgatory they could bring buses or transportation in there to take those people out in an emergency. And just as a matter of information, I have nine deployments with FEMA. So I know where I'm coming from about talking about evacuations. Thank you. I'll keep it short because it's past my bedtime.
Thank you, Walt.
Dan, my name is William H. Watkins. I'm the architect for the project. I just want the council to understand that when we design an adult daycare or a child's daycare, the program and the, that we use is really the state's program. The state decides how much room is required, how many people can be there, what the staffing should be. So this isn't just coming from these guys' heads. This is the state's program. And the state has said how much room is required, how many toilets- well, the building code tells us how many toilets are required. So it's not something that's just pulled out of our head. As you guys generally know, architects design through someone's requirements. And in this case, it's the state's and of course, your building code. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Schmidt, one-zero-six-five St. Anthony. I was on council the time when we banned the daycares, child daycares in the shopping centers, which was a wonderful idea. Previous to that, I had a child daycare center go in at Plaza Madrid. And it was very much, at the time, we didn't have an ordinance to ban it, so it was a special use permit. We ended up letting them go in with modifications. We made them put in a separate drop-off zone lane that was blocked off by ballards. And it got to be a real hassle for them to do that. I guess my point is, I'm not trying to equate adult daycares with the child daycares. What I'm attempting to say is, I think there's compromise here. I can see the value in this daycare center. I know they're needed. I'm not fond of putting them in a shopping center either. I know this is not the best spot for it, in that corner of that and it's a couple of doors down from the License Bureau. But I think there is room for compromise. I think if they utilize that rear area more for a strict drop-off zone as well, so that no residents basically come in the front door, I think they'd be much better off. I think if they alarm the front door so that no resident can leave, or they'll know about it, I'm sure they're probably going to have a receptionist there full-time and hope she is. I think that'll avoid anybody walking out that front door into traffic. That would be my main concern, as long as the residents stay inside. But I think that what I'm just trying to say is, I think there's room for compromise. I think you can give them a chance. I think we can come to some conclusion here. The other thing is I have is, it caught me off-guard a little bit, but I heard Ms. Mays say something about an in-home daycare center that she runs. And I'm just curious as how that's going to operate if she's doing this now? And whose home is that really in and what's that all about? I'm just concerned about that too, an in-home daycare center in the city of Florissant, so. But that's another subject, but I just thought I'd throw that out. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike Yvorsky, twenty-nine-fifty-nine Willow Creek Estates Drive in Florissant. Believe it or not, I'll make this short because I'm missing Hogan's Heroes right now. But anyway, believe it or not, I have a little bit of experience in this. My daughter was associate director at a daycare center, adult daycare, at Manchester and DePere, called Family Partners. Family Partners won an award, a state award, best run, two years while she was there. She's not there anymore. And believe it or not, it's in a strip mall. Now, the difference is, it's not a busy strip mall. So I agree with the last speaker that maybe, since we all agree that this is a great idea, that we do need this, and my daughter also agrees in this area that it would be very beneficial, that maybe there is some compromise. So that's all I'm saying is, instead of figuring out maybe why this won't work, where will it work, how can it work, and how can we make it work and get on with it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Pagano moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hinky. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Next item is old business, bills for a second reading. Bill number nine-four-seven-nine. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to continue this until the May thirteenth meeting, second?
There's a motion on the floor to continue this to the May thirteenth meeting, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Bill number nine-four-seven-nine is continued to next council meeting. New business, board appointments. Mayor?
I'd like to appoint Bill Schnarr, eighteen-thirty-five Clover, Ward five, to the Disability Awareness Commission with an expiration date of April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Shuldoff moves to approve. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion is carried.
I also would like to appoint Sherri Smith, number six, St. Corielius, Ward five, to the Emergency Management Commission, expiration date four-twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Shuldoff moves to approve, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Appointments are made. Thank you, Mayor. Next item is bills for a first reading. Bill number nine-four-eight-two.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Unique Loving Hands Adult Daycare LLC, DBA Unique Loving Hands Daycare, to allow for the operation of adult daycare for the property located at six-twenty North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number nine-four-eight-three.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into agreement with St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners to allow for Officer Dan Beerman to serve as instructor at the St. Louis County Police Academy.
Mr. Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any against? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into agreement with St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners to allow for Officer Dan Beerman to serve as instructor at the St. Louis County Police Academy.
Mr. Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Roll call, please.
Harris? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam? Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into an agreement with the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners to allow for Officer Dan Beerman to serve as an instructor at the St. Louis County Police Academy.
Before the final vote is taken, does anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing clerk, please poll the council.
Harris? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky? Pagano? Parsons? Sayam?
Bill number nine-four-eight-three passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-zero-two. Bill number nine-four-eight-four.
Ordinance amending the park improvement fund revenue account, number zero-nine-four-zero-nine-five-three-zero, to reflect twenty-five thousand dollars in grant revenue and authorizing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to account number zero-nine-five-zero-nine-six-one-four-seven-zero. Capital additions for Sunset Greenway Trail slope repair.
I'll move for a second read, seconded by Mr. Harris. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending the park improvement fund revenue account, number zero-nine-four-zero-nine-five-three-zero, to reflect twenty-five thousand dollars in grant revenue and authorizing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to account number zero-nine-five-zero-nine-six-one-four-seven-zero. Capital additions for Sunset Greenway Trail slope repair.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. Roll call, please.
Harris? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff? Hanky? Pagano? Parsons? Sayam? Ordinance amending the park improvement fund revenue account, to reflect twenty-five thousand dollars in grant revenue and an authorizing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to account number zero-nine-five-zero-nine-six-one-four-seven-zero. Capital additions for Sunset Greenway Trail slope repair.
Before the final vote is taken, does anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing clerk, please poll the council.
Harris? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff? Hanky? Pagano? Parsons? Sayam?
Bill number nine-four-eight-four passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-zero-three. Bill number nine-four-eight-five.
Ordinance amending capital improvement fund revenue account, number zero-three-four-zero-three-five-three-zero, to reflect twenty-five thousand dollars in grant revenue and authorizing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to account number zero-three-five-zero-three-six-one-four-seven-zero. Capital additions for Sunset Greenway Trail slope repair.
Councilman Shuldoff moves for a second read, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All against? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending capital improvement fund revenue account, zero-three-four-zero-three-five-three-zero, to reflect twenty-five thousand dollars in grant revenue and authorizing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to account number zero-three-five-zero-three-six-one-four-seven-zero. Capital additions for Sunset Greenway Trail slope repair.
Councilman Hinky moves for a third read, seconded by Mr. Sayam. Roll call, please.
Harris? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky? Pagano? Parsons? Sayam?
Before the final vote is taken, does anyone in the audience like to speak on this?
I got to read it. You really want to hear me do this again, don't you? Ordinance amending capital improvement fund revenue account, zero-three-four-zero-three-five-three-zero, to reflect twenty-five thousand dollars in grant revenue and authorizing an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to account number zero-three-five-zero-three-six-one-four-seven-zero. Capital additions for Sunset Greenway Trail slope repair.
Before the final vote is taken, does anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing clerk, please poll the council.
Harris? Jones? Egan? Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky? Pagano? Parsons? Sayam?
Bill number nine-four-eight-five passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-zero-four. Bill number nine-four-eight-six.
Ordinance authorizing the city of Florissant, Missouri, to enter into lease purchase agreement as lessy with B-O-K-F-N-A, as lesser, to finance the cost of making energy-efficient improvements to various city facilities and authorizing execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Next item is council announcements. Mr. Hinky.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This coming Saturday, April twenty-seventh, those at the ward probably received, I hope they've received the postcards that we sent out. We're having a Ward Six cleanup for the Valley of Flowers is coming up. A lot of the events at the Valley of Flowers are in Ward Six. So this Saturday, we're meeting at Sacred Heart's parking lot. Come one, come all. We'll have everything arranged to go. And we're going to just clean up. Shouldn't take us hopefully less than two hours. Clean up the trash, clean up the streets, whatever we need to do to just put on our best foot forward for the Valley of Flowers. As I said in the postcard, if you received it, you do not necessarily have to come there at Sacred Heart at ten o'clock on Saturday morning. If you could squeeze in a couple hours that afternoon, or Sunday afternoon, or whatever fits in your schedule. But let's get Ward Six cleaned up for the Valley of Flowers. And I'm looking at, I haven't even done the first one yet, but I'm looking at possibly doing this the week before the Valley of Flowers and possibly the week before Fall Festival. So I hope to see you Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hinky. Mr. Jones?
Yep, I'd like to give a shout-out to Team Our Food Pantry. Well, there's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night. So please, you guys, if you've got some extra canned goods, some extra money, please run it down there if you've got some time to spare. They're always looking for volunteers, too. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our police department. We had, one of our churches on Lindsay Lane had a fair over the weekend and it butted up to Easter. So we tried to put out signs and I think they worked this year. So a big shout-out to those guys. I know it's hard when your family comes over at Easter time and you can't park in front of your own house because the church is having a fair up the street. Well, I think they did a real good job at that. Hopefully next year, we'll do it again if it butts up to Easter again. I do look forward to working with our new mayor and I think all of us feels the same way up here. It's been a very good thing that happened tonight. So till that happens, I guess, kudos to our new mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw a graphic on the police department website and it said nine PM routine. And I hadn't heard of that before. And so I read through there and apparently it's a strategy or an initiative to get people to check their car doors at nine PM. I thought, that's great. Getting into a routine with anything you do, if you do it enough, then you'll do it. And there's been a lot of break-ins, but not just in Florissant. I think it's everywhere because I've seen other municipalities that have had this issue. So it says, what is the nine PM routine, you ask? Well, we're glad you asked. This is quoting The Post on the police department. In Florissant, the majority of vehicle break-ins are crimes of opportunity and too many vehicles are left unlocked with valuables inside during overnight hours. Criminals targeting your vehicles aren't after specific items. Instead, they are looking for any items that may have value. the ward probably received, I hope they've received the postcards that we sent out, uh, we're having a Ward 6 cleanup for the Valley of Flowers is coming up. A lot of the events in the Valley of Flowers are in Ward 6. So this Saturday, we're meeting in Sacred Heart's parking lot, come one, come all. Uh, we'll have everything arranged to go and we're gonna just clean up. Should take us hopefully less than two hours. Clean up the trash, clean up the streets, whatever we need to do to just put on our best foot forward for the Valley of Flowers. As I said in the postcard, if you received it, you do not necessarily have to come there to Sacred Heart at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. If you can squeeze in a couple hours that afternoon or Sunday afternoon or whatever fits in your schedule, but let's get Ward 6 cleaned up for the Valley of Flowers. And I'm looking at, I haven't even done the first one yet, but I'm looking at possibly doing this the week before the Valley of Flowers and possibly the week before Fall Festival. So I hope to see you Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hinky. Mr. Jones?
Yep, I'd like to give a shout-out to team, our food pantry. Well, there's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night. Uh, so please, you guys, if you've got some extra canned goods, some extra money, please run it down there if you've got some time to spare. They're always looking for volunteers, too. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our police department. We had, uh, one of our churches on Lindsay Lane had a fair over the weekend and it butted up to Easter. So, uh, we tried to put out signs and I think they worked this year. So a big shout-out to those guys. Uh, I know it's hard when your family comes over at Easter time and you can't park in front of your own house because the church is having a fair up the street. Well, I think they did a real good job at that. Hopefully next year, we'll do it again if it butts up to Easter again. Uh, I do look forward to working with our new mayor and, uh, I think all of us feels the same way up here. It's been a very, uh, good thing that happened tonight. So, uh, till, uh, till that happens, I guess, kudos to our new mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I saw a graphic on the police department website and it said, "9:00 PM Routine," and, and I hadn't heard of that before. And so I read through, through there and apparently it's a strategy or a initiative to get people to, to check their car doors at 9:00 PM. I thought, "That's great. Getting into a routine with anything you do, if you do it enough, then, then you'll, you'll do it." And, uh, there, there's been a lot of break-ins, but not just in Florissant. I think it's everywhere because I've seen other municipalities that have had this issue. So, uh, it says, "What is the, what is the 9:00 PM routine, you ask? Well, we're glad you asked." This is, this is quoting the Post, uh, on, on the police department. "In Florissant, the majority of vehicle break-ins are crimes of opportunity and too many vehicles are left unlocked with valuables inside during overnight hours. Criminals targeting your vehicles aren't after specific items. Instead, they are looking for any items that may have value. The 9:00 PM routine is a nightly reminder to remove valuables from your vehicles and ensure all doors are locked, including home and garage areas. The goal of the 9:00 PM routine is to combat auto thefts and break-ins and help empower citizens to develop their own personal security routines by having a designated time to perform these tasks every night at 9:00 PM." So thank you to the police department for putting that out there and I'm gonna start thinking about that myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Shuldoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the grass-cutting season is here. Please do not cut your grass into the street or blow your grass into the street. You can get a ticket and this clogs the sewers on your street and, uh, that is not a good thing. So please do not do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldoff. Uh, yes, I'd, um, like to say, if you own a firearm, make sure you keep your firearm secured. Do not leave them in your vehicle. We have a, another, um, weapon being stolen. This one, this time it was out of the house. So, but make sure you keep your firearms secured. Uh, I'd like to piggyback off of what Mr. Harris said about that. That is great to get in a routine, the 9:00 PM routine, to make sure your house is secured, your vehicles and other stuff. Do not leave nothing in your, your vehicles